Okay, I will say so from the order. Sorry for the delay and just open potential chaos, but uh. God is a holy water. It wouldn't, it wouldn't. Again, I just had a chance to have that stated for you. This is the first thing I'm saying with any of this staff, please neutralize.
It should be going there.
So, okay, so just before we start, I want to just say a big happy new year to all of the council and city chairman down. Happy twenty twenty-two, healthy and prosperous new year. Any declarations of conflict or business?
Yes, it works. I do, Council of Reverend here. I am in conflict under planning number three, short-term drugs over recent framework. As well as the bidding papers on number one, same, same topic.
Reverend, Reverend, is your, your conflict related to work?
Uh, my conflict is related to the fact that my partner uh is enjoying the CEO of Taipei, which represents industry, leaving myself on the.
Okay. And with another conflict business?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in conflict with you as well.
Because of uh distinct the conflict.
Counselor, I'm trying to explain what's in the uh best PR business.
Moved by Council of Town, set by Councilor Ante Vali. All in favor? Okay. So in dust with the previous draft, it's breaking into December thirteenth and the public meeting November ninth. So that thing. Josh and Brad up. Um. Enough? Okay, let's go into this first report and it's um four reports at least planning inherits. Counselor Terry McLeod.
Counselor McLeod, thank you very much, Your Worship, uh, am I coming in good and clear? All good?
Very good.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Your Worship, the planning heritage committee did not meet in January of twenty-two, therefore there are no reports or minutes uh attached. Planning board met on Tuesday, January the fourth. That planning board reports and minutes are included in the package. Uh, there's minutes from January fourth, uh, the public minute meetings and other reports as well. The heritage board committee did not meet in December, uh, therefore there were no reports or minutes and the design view board did not meet in December as well, uh, therefore there were no reports or minutes. The affordable housing committee met on December twenty-first. Uh, copy of the affordable housing advisory committee minutes are included in your package and that meeting was on December twenty-first. Uh, I have three resolutions uh for tonight's uh consideration with the planning heritage department. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Council of Town. Any questions? Uh, Counselor Terry McLeod's report, when we move to the. McLeod, you want to read out basically the title of this report or are you just to proceed?
Okay, so uh we'll start um with number one, uh, which is the. When the PID number three-three-five-four-three-zero and eight-nine, sorry, eight-two uh five-nine-five-zero and eight-four-five-two-eight. Um, it's a major variance request to temporarily permit Canada Games cultural hub uh for a period of fourteen days during the, the uh winter Canada Games from February eighteenth through the March uh fifth. Um, and uh in we'll answer any questions and if I want to give any press updates on that, uh, I would greatly appreciate it.
So I'll put the motion on the floor first, Your Worship, and it's moved by Council McLeod, second by Council McCabe. That's request for a major variance to temporarily permit a Canada Games cultural hub, including entertainment, active recreation, eating and drinking establishment uses at one Wayma Street, PID three-three-five-four-three-zero, eight-two-five-nine-five-zero and PID eight-four-one-five-two-eight. From February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three to March fifth, twenty-twenty-three, be approved, subject to the following conditions. One, as per zoning and development bylaw, permit approval for any associated temporary structures, e.g. tents and signage. Two, coordination with the city's Department of Economic Development, Tourism and Event to ensure compliance with all other applicable provincial and municipal regulatory requirements. Example of City of Shell Town nuisance and noise bylaw, fire emergency safety plans, provincial liquid control commission licensing and permit requirements, provincial public health act orders, as well as the City of Shell Town event guideline. And three, circulation of the proposed cultural hub plans to the City of Shell Town departments in front of economic development, tourism and events, planning heritage, fire, police services, public works, power to recreation, communications, water and sewer utility and sustainability for review and comment prior to implementation, Your Worship.
Thank you, rest. So, any questions?
I'd just like to add, add to that, Your Worship, the staff's recommendation on this was to approve and also the board's recommendation was to approve. Thank you.
Counselor, please ask a question.
That, I have a question. Um, in terms of everything that's involved here, it seems like a pretty, pretty comprehensive program, um, and the anticipation of uh Wayma Street. Uh, as regards to the consultation with the community and surrounding uh public information sort of measures, uh, going to be immediate impact that by, you know, the students of this, they're going to be involved in terms of consultation and collaboration. And um, the second question I have is, uh, are we going to have a community meeting or a public meeting uh to get our feedback with community? And then second, what is the communication strategy?
Counselor McLeod, thank you very much, uh, Counselor Trill, for your questions. Uh, um, the, like any other uh planning project, there, uh, the, uh, there's been letters sent out to all the residents uh within the hundred meters. Um, and that, uh, I think Alex can probably answer a little more on what the force, the uh vision is on, on the PR of, of the event. Um, I think everything's been kind of, um, looked after, so it's, you know, noise, fire on, nuisance, but all those things have all been covered. Uh, staff has done a great job, but I will let Alex uh further in the conversation we're going to carry on with.
Uh, thank, thank you, Your Worship, uh, yeah, so all of the planning piece has been done, uh, we, we've done the consultation for the planning piece and uh Wayne Long, he may be, he may be coming along later in the meeting, I'm not sure, but it's really his department that's helping steward this and I think it's their intent, but I, I don't want to make any commitments for any other departments, but I think the ward council al- also indicated this is a year off that this uh event is going to take place. And I think it was the intent that uh either communications or tourism would certainly uh try to notify people uh well in advance or like a month in advance of this event that, that it's coming up and uh, you know, so that it's no surprise because they're getting a very early approval, but I guess what I'm alluding to is the planning work will be done, but we have to be mindful of that when this uh gets initiated a year from now, uh, I, I think it would be prudent that we all work together to make sure those residents are notified. Thank you.
So, so, yeah, this, this, uh, Counsel, with Counsel, uh, Counselor McLeod, a合并way line in this.
Are you from here? Yep.
Hey, good.
Do you want to, just some background?
Sure, I'll, I'll give a few pieces of, of background, Your Worship. Um, staffs have been working with the Canada Games for well over a year now on this particular file, um, as well as the, uh, the planning department. Uh, been a lot of work done on the, uh, the content as, um, Mr. Ford was indicated, letters have gone out to anyone who resides in a hundred meters of, uh, the area itself. With today's approval, um, all of the typical city protocols would be adhered to, so that it's approval from individual departments, uh, for things such as the event guidelines, for things such as the nuisance bylaw which deals with, um, curfews, et cetera. It should be noted that this is a, a family celebration area. Um, for the most part, um, any activity that which would cause, um, louder noise like music, etc., will be actually in the course of building itself. It's not outside, so it's more of a, a celebrational zone. The Canada Games organization itself is well working with its own, um, communication staff as well. They are going to work through the downtown residential association with respect to further dialogue uh to the area. Um, they will also work with the City of Shell Town's communication department with respect to strategy, um, as a whole. So tonight's resolution of council endorsed it. It would allow the organization to get to work to bring this phenomenal event uh for the Shell Town waterfronts and for the city as a whole in terms of economic development, culture and the activation and inclusion of our community at large.
Counselor, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, thank you, Reverend, thank you, Alex. Um, just a fair one, so letters about, about a hundred meters, um, because no surprise is by, by the event, uh, they don't want the feedback is, uh, but if I understand it correctly, Alex, this does not require a public meeting, is that correct?
Uh, through Your Worship, uh, yes, you are correct, but uh, but this is a, just a variance and that if you prove it this evening, the process is over.
Again, this doesn't require a public meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
No, no public meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Question call. Question call by Counselor Ranty. All in favor, please just indicate I have to go through each person. Deputy Cody, yea, nay?
In favor.
Yea, your name? You hear me, Deputy Cody?
That being proven?
Yes, in favor? Yea?
Yes.
Counselor McLeod, yea, your name? Counselor McCabe, yea, your name?
In favor.
Counselor Duffy? Counselor Duffy, yea, your name? Uh, on you, on you. In favor? Just raise your hand. Yea, your name? Okay, Counselor Ranty, yea, your name? In favor? Say, Counselor Yankoff, yea, your name?
In favor.
For files?
In favor.
Counselor Will?
In favor.
Counselor Rivera?
I'm in favor.
And Counselor Brown?
In favor.
Thank you. That's what's open?
Thank you, Your Worship, uh, eighty-five Mall Tech Road, PID three-eight-eight-one-eight-one and amend appendix A, the future land use map of the official plan from low density residential to institutional and then appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from single detached residential, uh, one L zone to the institutional I zone to allow for the expansion of the existing care home facility.
Because some of those are, some of them.
The report is on page C forty-four, staff's recommendation was to approve and the board's recommendation was also proceed to a, a published consultation and I'll ask, uh, Commissioner to read the resolution.
Again, Your Worship, moved by Counsel McLeod, second by Counsel McCabe. That's request to amend appendix A, future land use map of the official plan from low density residential to institutional and amend appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from singly attached residential, R one L zone to the institutional I zone for the property located at eighty-five Mall Tech Road, PID three-eight-eight-one-eight-one be approved to proceed to public consultation.
Uh, question foul. Question foul, good. Deputy Mayor Cody, yea, your name? Go to the public consultation.
You, You worship, I, I was just going to clarify something in the report if I, if I could.
Oh, anything else, how did you clarify the? Go ahead, sir.
James, sorry, thank you. Just, just wanted to make sure that the entrance and X is on Mall Tech Road and the second point was that this development that goes ahead is, um, twenty-five feet off the nearest property. I looked at, at the, uh, adjacent, right there in the neighborhood. Are those two things correct?
Thank you very much for the question, Counselor Cody, and you're correct in both uh of your points, uh, Mr. McDougal did, uh, did this, uh, that the other evening that uh it's twenty-five feet from the nearest home and that the entrance is on Mall Tech, nothing to do with the back on R one zone.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Deputy Aaron, yea, your name?
In favor.
Deputy Aaron, yea, your name?
In favor.
Okay. Counselor McCabe, yea, your name?
In favor.
Counselor Duffy? Counselor Duffy, yea, your name? In favor? Hey, Counselor Ranty? In favor? Counselor Cloud? Counselor Prue? Counselor, yea, your name? Yea?
In, in favor.
Counselor Rivera?
I'm in favor.
Counselor Brown?
In favor.
Okay, ten zero. Okay, that's very close.
Yes, Your Worship, moved by Counsel McLeod, second by Counsel McCabe. Does request to amend sections of the official plan PH dash OPA dot one and sections of the zoning and development bylaw PH dash D dot two as follows be approved. Official plan amendments pertaining to section three point two sustaining Shell Town's neighborhoods and section four point five supporting home occupation. And under the zoning and development bylaw amendments pertaining to section five point six secondary suites, section five point seven garden suites, section five point one-one tourist accommodation on residential properties, section forty-four point one parking space standards and appendix A definition, Your Worship.
So, okay, if I, if I, if I, yeah, so, uh, in order to bring, uh, the SDRs by rights in, um, we need to amend the official plan and that's what we're doing here this evening. And, and also to bring in, um, you know, there's, there's zoning bylaw, um, there's zoning conviction bylaw, there's a lot of other, uh, aspects of this, uh, have to be worked on by staff. And so what we're looking for tonight is, is the direction on the land use end of it. Um, we don't have to make a decision tonight on the SDRs, it's two hundred and seventy pages. I understand some of these have not been kind of in the queue, uh, so, you know, um, I think, uh, there's a lot of reading material there, but I'm, but I'm open to whatever uh we decide with staff's recommendation is there. Um, and then we can work on after that, uh, we can continue, um, to work on a, a deadline, uh, as to when the bylaw will come into place. Um, one, one thought is, is to, is to, for council to have a decision made, um, by next month to give staff a direction so that they can work on these other aspects of, of the bylaw that have to be done. And there'd be a, a timeframe, uh, put down then and, uh, up to council as well, but the idea would be that, uh, for this year, um, we might just, uh, sit tight and, and, uh, let council work on those other aspects of it and let things happen as they normally work with whatever direction that council gives staff, um, on the bylaw. So, so, um, February, you know, would be the latest, we want to drag this in, we do need to give the, uh, we do need to give the, the folks an opportunity to, to get out there and promote, uh, business and, and, uh, so that's where it is, uh, the grandfathering aspect again, um, there needs to be a fair amount of consultation done on that as well. Um, but, you know, starting off tonight, we're just looking for directions, uh, from council, along with any questions they may have and if we so choose, so to take back and do some more and, and, and we can ask, because I do understand it's been an awful lot of information absorbed over the weekend. So, uh, in that, uh, we'll open up to, uh, any questions, uh, if anyone may.
Any questions? Just put up your hand, please, if you're not asking questions, mute your mic. They're calling a question. Call the question. It's a call and a question on the amendments to the following sections, which is part of this SDR, uh, framework that we're putting in place. And, um, I start off with Counselor Deputy Mayor Cody, yea, your name?
So, I, I just wanted to throw off the Counselor McCall's, um, introductory comment there, so, I guess, what are we, what are we doing here tonight? We're, we're talking about taking this package and reading it and coming back in February, is that correct? That's what the call, or?
Yeah, well, um, I, I think, uh, Counselor, you and I both have numerous times have made it, made a point that it's not all information. Um, yeah, you know, two hundred and seventy pages, I, I felt, uh, I felt that, you know, we do have to move forward on this, we can't sit, sit on an end any longer. Um, but at the same time, to be fair to the bylaw itself and to us, um, you know, if there's questions now, we can answer, but if not, um, we could have one more meeting, I, you know, get it into the end of the month, into February and, and hopefully have it done by then and, and, uh, give staff clarity on which, where we would like these, uh, Airbnb's to be. And, and that's, uh, that's pretty well there. And tonight, we're just, uh, we're doing some tidying up of the official, uh, plan amendments that will help move this along as well.
Uh, Counselor Carter, can I just ask Mr. Ford, Mr. Ford's meeting just provides your direction?
You sure can.
Uh, Your Worship, yeah, what, what, uh, it, it's a follow-up from, uh, you know, Counselor McLeod's comments, this, this is a pretty weighty document, uh, what, what staff are looking for at this time is to see how comfortable you are with how we're dealing with the land use piece. Uh, if, if you are, uh, that you're comfortable with the land use piece and you so desire, you can, uh, confirm that this evening, but you can send it back to staff, uh, with, with some direction that we're comfortable with the land use piece or some modifications. And then we will follow up with you with, with a report next month to tidy up whatever discussion is tonight, solidify the position that you're going to provide tonight and then we will indicate the timeline and the other pieces that, and the timelines that will flow from that. But, uh, you know, if Counselor McLeod hit the nail on the head, we would like the zoning part of it, uh, tidied up fairly soon so that the SDR operators, uh, who are going to be starting in earnest in April, uh, will know what to expect, uh, the rules are going to be in twenty twenty-two. And then, you know, we may have, uh, a, a grace period that will take this through into twenty twenty-three to allow people to make this decisions in regard to, uh, how they see themselves moving forward on this. But, but this evening's discussion is just, uh, are you comfortable with the direction uh that we're going, uh, and where they will be located in the city? And if you so desire, uh, you can give that indication tonight and then, uh, send, send it back to staff and we will make any small adjustments this evening and then follow up in February with a more comprehensive report and we're, we're going to move forward with the other pieces. Thank you.
So then, Alex, this is part of the process and this is the first stage. You will be following up with a summary of antecedent by law also, correct?
Correct, and, you know, the reason we did it this way is that this, if, if you had have done all of three bylaws at the same time, uh, the report would have been like four hundred pages. We're, we're, we're trying to sort of take it in stages and the land use piece, which is this first piece, if, if, if we can get clarity out of that and, and make any small tweaks if you so desire, uh, if you, if you decide, uh, if, if you, you, you motioned this evening, it just couldn't even be just to direct it back to staff with some, if the clarity that you're afraid of this. And then we'll follow up in February with, uh, that the land use piece has been resolved, uh, and then we will, uh, give you a blueprint and an outline of how we see the grace period and all of the other pieces, uh, following into place later in the year.
Is that all, Counselor Deputy Mayor Cody? Good?
Sure.
Okay, question was called, okay. Counselor Deputy Mayor Cody, yea, your name?
Yea.
Counselor McLeod, yea, your name?
Yeah, I'm good.
Counselor Trill, yea, your name?
PID.
Yea.
Uh, Counselor Duffy, yea, your name? Yea? 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 Counselor Ranty, yea, your name? First hand. Counselor Cloud, yea, your name?
In favor.
Counselor Yankoff, yea, your name?
In favor.
And Counselor Brown, yea, your name?
In favor.
Okay, eight zero, and I have Counselor Rivera, a trio in conflict of interest. Now, please, Counselor McCount, anything else to report?
Uh, we have one first reading.
And one second reading, Your Worship, and the first reading ties into the motion just passed, so we should do that at this time as well. And it's.
Okay, sir.
The official plan, PH OPA dot one to adopt the official plan amendments, PH dash OPA dot one, uh, hyphen O three O to amend sections of the official plan, PH OPA dot one by amending section three point two sustaining Shell Town's neighborhoods and section four point five supporting home occupations be resolved at the official plan amendments, PH dash OPA dot one dash O three O as pertains to the official plan amendment as attached be adopted. Move by Counsel McLeod, second by Counsel McCabe.
Okay.
Your Worship, uh, zoning and development, uh, bylaw PH dash ZD dot two to adopt bylaw PH dash ZD dot two, that hyphen O five six, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to amend sections of the zoning and development bylaw, bylaw PH dash ZD dot two pertaining to sections five point six, section five point seven, section five point one-one, section forty-four point one in appendix A be resolved at the bylaw to amend the City of Shell Town zoning and development bylaw, PH dash ZD dot two, that hyphen O five six as pertains to zoning and development bylaw amendments as attached be read a first time and approved and to be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, move by Counsel McLeod, second by Counsel McCabe.
Sure. Pass. Pass.
Okay, Your Worship, moving on, we'll let the other people know that, uh, we're clear of that one and they can come up to the meeting.
My problem, do we, oh, you're going to do the water lot when they come back?
Uh, yes.
Yes, okay.
So that conflict, um, no. Okay, um, what's this? You said a lot of expressions.
I think Counselor, uh, Rivera's trying to, uh, call back in, Your Worship, so.
I'm, I'm there.
Okay, and Counselor Trill, are you there as well?
What's on you?
Okay, thank you. Your Worship, uh, moved by Counsel McLeod, second by Counsel McCabe, where as a bylaw to amend the City of Shell Town zoning and development bylaw, PH dash ZD dot two, hyphen O five five, as pertains to the zoning and development bylaw amendments as attached was read and approved a first time on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, be resolved that the said bylaw be read a second time and, uh, approved.
So, pass. Pass.
And Your Worship be resolved that the said bylaw be adopted, move by Counsel McLeod and second by Counsel McCabe.
So, pass. Pass. Okay, so is that the, Mr.?
That concludes, I mean, for Your Worship.
Okay, Counsel, could you ask, can you just declare this in the parquet room, please?
I'm sorry, Your Worship, was that again?
Could you just ask, can you just declare the parquet room?
Okay, Your Worship.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready to go. The next report is on next week's report, the release, finance and policy. Correct, am I? Deputy Mayor Cody?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Your Worship. Our, uh, our committee met, the report is in your package. Uh, as counsel and, uh, staff know, the finance committee is in the middle of, uh, working on capital budgets. Want to thank everyone for their efforts, uh, that's our prioritizing the, uh, the projects and their. and their apps. It's a big job, as everyone knows, but that's kind of what we're into here right now. Uh, there are no resolutions, Your Worship, but if there's any questions, I can, uh, I can do my best to answer them.
Okay, any questions for the Chair, so for the finance and policy?
I have a question.
Go right ahead, there, Council McCabe.
Well, Deputy Mayor, thank you for your report. Uh, as you're undoubtedly aware, uh, the finance department has embarked upon the public consultation process. Uh, could you give me an idea when the public consultation process closes?
We've already had a lot of feedback. I don't have the date right in front of me. Um, if there are comments or projects that want to be submitted now would be the time, I guess, as, as the committee is working through the process right now.
Okay, well, I just want you to know, and I know you're aware, a lot of feedback is coming from the Sherrigan regarding the active, active transportation pathway on Town Road. Um, a lot of people have, uh, made their pictures, taken them all, and for the last three or four years. So I just wanted to make sure you was the chair of finance, have, uh, we see you get all those emails.
Yes, yeah, I have. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any more questions for the Chairperson Finance Department?
I have, I have a question, Your Worship.
Go right ahead, there, Council Bernard.
Uh, uh, can I, can I, just, uh, to continue your report? Curious, um, the Public Works cap, that's where, 700, 7,000, 798 dollars. Can you tell me what that's for?
Uh, don't have it right in front of me, Council Bernard. I'll ask Nancy if she can, uh, answer that for you though.
Nancy, are you there? Nancy? You there, please? What's the first certification? Do you have the financial statements spread to Council Bernard?
What's that?
Are you referring to the financial statements for the third quarter?
No, current, current, in finance, man, what the transfers, what happened, 737,000, 698 dollars.
Thank you, Council Bernard. So Nancy, are you there?
If not, Your Worship, try Scott, he may be there as well.
Is Scott Adam there? Is it the public services?
I, I am here, Your Worship.
Can you provide some input, sir?
Certainly, so, uh, these were transfers, I guess, uh, that were missed at time of, uh, when the resolution is passed. So, uh, I believe there's two resolutions, uh, in, uh, spring 2021. I can't remember exactly which ones they are, uh, but I believe Pond Street may have been one. So, uh, there are just two transfers that everything was approved at the council level, just the paperwork, um, uh, got missed and got, and so we just, uh, formalized everything and, uh, submitted to finance to follow process.
I didn't hear what you said.
Follow up question, Council Bernard?
Yeah, so, so Scott, what was the money for?
There was three separate transfers in the total. Sorry, my speaker wasn't working up there. So we transferred, um,
Go ahead.
We transferred from the fire station and we transferred from the, uh, large fleet to small fleet. And
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Nancy, what the money was for, not where it came from, just what were you for?
Oh, it was for, uh, it was for equipment for the small fleet was part of it. I didn't bring that. Just one second, sorry. Is Scott not there?
Uh, Mr. Scott, are you able to help with this one?
Um, I don't have the paper right in front of me, but I believe one of the transfers was for, uh, the prices came much higher than anticipated, but that was a large fleet to small fleet transfer. Uh, fire station, I believe it was for, uh, Pond Street, because the prices came in high for that one. And I don't recall the third one, I don't have that right in front of me.
The third one was for the winter dump, the winter snow dump facility. These are all, these, uh, these three transfers has already been passed by resolution, uh, in previous meetings, so we were just doing the paperwork now.
And that was discussed, the finance and policy committee, correct?
And council.
And council. They were all passed by resolution.
Okay, because this, this says that it's met on January 5th. Okay, so this is already, it's already done then?
Right, the resolutions have been through council and now we are just, um, doing the actual budget transfer.
Okay, so the resolution was through council to, to, to buy the vehicles and so on, and it turned out you were short money, so you decided to transfer that?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Same with the snow dump site, and the other one? Nancy?
I'm so, I'm sorry?
Snow dump, air, uh, facility, what was the other?
Pond Street, Your Worship.
Yeah. Okay. Good, any more questions for the Chair of Finance and Policy, correct?
Yeah, I have another question, Your Worship.
Of course, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, gentlemen, Deputy, um, as you know, in that previous discussion at the council typically is about the resolution was passed to, uh, a reward enterprise, P I, to, uh, manage our fleet. And I'm just wondering, was it going to be further collaboration and consultation with the industry? Um, we've all received emails, uh, in the past. Uh, and there seems to be, there seems to be a difference of, uh, difference of opinion from the perspective of both the industry's perspective. And, uh, I don't know, but it's a question or more, or more so a request to ensure that all the information is fully flushed out and thoughtful and transparent, and there's a misunderstanding amongst five members of the industry in that they thought they were truly heard. Um, would you care to like to, uh, having, uh, a meeting with, with the industry and all members of council to clarify those discrepancies and those, um, um, misinformation or, uh, misunderstanding so that, uh, so that the industry, uh, is truly vetted in terms of their concerns and, and information that, uh, that has been sent to council?
With, with leading the discussions on this, to be honest, it was, it was Public Works Department that had kind of spearheaded this. Um, you know, I, I don't want to say we're, we're going to meet, uh, that'd be more Public Works and, and the management, I'm not sure, Council McLeod, if it was, um, Stephen McFadden, that was kind of having most of the conversations there with the different, with the different groups, the, the Automobile Association, the Enterprise, but.
So just to be clear, I was, uh, um, and Stephen Lock and Stephen McFadden was involved with this. Um, um, council already approved this, we're already entered into a contract with Enterprise, and, uh, we've already entered into phase one. Uh, and if there's any other issues or concerns as we move forward, again, council can ask for more in, information, but we've already approved by council, move forward, and we've signed off the contracts.
And if I may, if I may just add to help Council Truill's, uh, answer question is, is, uh, the Public Works had asked, uh, me in particular, um, had asked staff, who felt comfortable with it, let's go the extra yard, let's bring the Automobile Association in, have it just talk and answer any questions, which they did comply with some questions. Stephen McFadden, uh, from the Public Works staff, uh, answered those questions, and that was going to be presented, and then with the council. And, uh, so all the collaboration part has been done, and we're moving forward.
Your Worship? It's Council America, can I just do a follow-up, have a follow-up here, question? Yeah, thank you. Uh, on this topic, I'm going to bring it up, uh, later, I do, I would like to ask the agenda next, uh, next council meeting, um, because I've, I've reviewed some of the, uh, information as well, and I've got some information, and, uh, this whole thing doesn't fit well with me, so either, either we're open for discussion on the next council meeting, um, or I'll put a motion to order right now to seal the contract.
I've never, it's so ridiculous. Been through back and forth this over almost a year, councilors all vote on this, and all of a sudden now somebody puts up the watch to seal the contract. It's just terrible, and that's, that's
Yeah, I think that's almost the same as when it was approved.
Now, let's, again, let's defer because, uh, it was just brought up as a question. Councilor, Deputy Mayor Cody, do you have any other before, any more information to report, that's it?
No, that concludes our report.
Okay, left over human resources? Council, Alana Yankoff, what her name? Huh? Council Yankoff, is she there?
Thank you, Your Worship. So the, uh, human resource communication has been officially, we did not need this much, um, since the last meeting of the council. However, uh, both, I am here this evening and we can answer any questions you may have, and we have no resolutions for the, um, approval for the season either. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Council Yankoff? Say, and none, Council Yankoff? Especially, could you read the resolution?
We're going on to protective, uh, services, Your Worship, so that's the next item up for the agenda after the chair will move forward.
Okay. We don't have the agenda, is that what you're saying? I, I'm
No. There is no motion for HR. The next one I have, Your Worship, is for protective and emergency services, and that's the next item on the agenda, Your Worship.
Right, I have two. Okay, make it comprehend up. Okay, protective and emergency services standing committee, Council break, sir.
Thank you, Your Worship, uh, protective services, emergency services, not being the center due to the holiday season, um, but there is one resolution for consideration tonight, and as always, if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer it, and if not myself, I have the chief online as well.
So? Any questions for Council Bernard Rivera?
I, I have a question.
Council Richard, please.
Uh, Council Bernard, thank you for your part. Uh, one of the reasons about the magpence, you know, the last number releases, uh, was some confusion, people, um, uh, looking at unmarked police vehicles. And there's a lot of police vehicles that are, uh, you know, almost identical, and, and people are confused as to whether that's, it's a police vehicle. Uh, this seems to be, um, an ongoing concern, and I'd love to suggest that, uh, we, we embark upon a communication strategy, uh, we have two, uh, dog ramps, uh, police vehicles that are not, and some of them, it's so confused, uh, and even questionable validity, but in fact, they are, they are truly police vehicles. And it's, we, we all know that they are, but there's, uh, there's confusion and confusion that they're not, uh, really made aware that, uh, they're truly police vehicles. So, just, I would like the chief to, uh, take those concerns under advisement. I received an email, a phone call over the weekend, Chief McCollum, I'll be showing that on the U, and, 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 uh, Deputy Chief Sean Combs as well, uh, because, because of concerns that have been raised, that, um, I know that, uh, a lot of vehicles are unmarked, and, and look at some of the vehicles that are driving around, you're truly, uh, truly mistaken, uh, some of those, uh, chargers with, uh, probably the own vehicles, and, and you would think they're not police vehicles. Uh, so I wanted to bring back to your attention, and the second item I want to bring up is, uh, some seen concerns about, uh, the sale of vehicles in our city, and rather out with, uh, the sale of guns, uh, particularly on the, uh, uh, property set that have been identified in, in previous months, previous years, and, and rather out with that. Thank you.
Chair, uh, Council Bernard, do you have left to? Chief?
Thank you, Council Truill, yes, I will defer off the chief.
Chief? Did you hear the question?
Uh, yes, Your Worship, I did. Um, um, certainly, um, we did have unmarked vehicles in our fleet, um, you know, I think that's a standard policing practice across, uh, North America. Um, we'll certainly reflect on, on our fleet and to see if the right proportion of unmarked and marked vehicles are, this is for multiple, all marked vehicles, uh, in policing, uh, but we'll certainly, um, do, uh, worship, the Council Truill, put that email on, we'll take it, um, have a look at it and, uh, make sure we're, we're, we're doing the responsible thing in that area. Um, the second question, uh, you know, I, I think I've spoken many times that, uh, um, drugs are one of our, you know, the enforcement of drug tip is a priority for us, uh, we should all count and we continue to make it a priority, and you know, there are issues, um, areas, and, um, you know, the, the, you know, certainly our ongoing operations, uh, to deal with those, those issues.
Any other, Council Bernard, any other, any, any other more, more information to report, or just, you want to have the rest of the issue?
The rest of the
Okay, Mr. Kelly?
Yes, Worship, moved by Council Rivera, second by Council Ramsey, that the Public Works manager were authorized to cut grass, remove any garbage, and other materials or debris, clean up and properly dispose of the same at the owner's expense at the falling property located at 14 Oliverar Street, PID 362657, and according to the terms of the dangerous hazardous on Sunday bylaw of the City of Shell Town, Your Worship.
Any questions for the folks? All the questions? Question call, Deputy Mayor Cody, yea, your name?
Yea.
Yea? Council Bernard, give your name?
He's over.
Council McCabe, yea, your name?
He's over.
And Council Duff?
Here.
Council Ramsey? In favor? What's the sound?
There.
Council Truill? In favor? Council Lewis? Yankoff? Yea, your name?
In favor.
Council Bernard? Favor. And Council Broun? In favor? Okay, that's it? Anything, Council Bernard? Next, you four? Parks Recreation? These are two weeks, Council Chair Bernard?
It should be the CAC, First Worship, Council Advisor Committee?
Yeah, I hope you jumped ahead one there, Your Worship.
Well, do you have, I, I'm just excited to How long, please, Your Worship? How long, please? First, Council Yankoff, sorry, I missed you again, do you have a report?
Um, that's okay. Thank you, Your Worship. The Council Advisor Committee, we didn't leave the last meeting of, um, council, and I had no resolutions for your consideration, however, if anyone does have any questions, I'll do my best to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, kind. Any questions for Council, Alana Yankoff? Say, and none? Ready to go to the next committee report, and it's, uh, Parks, Recreation and Leisure Activities, Council Chair Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, Your Worship, Parks and Recreation Leisure Activities met on January the 4th, draft ministry and everyone's package, um, some highlights, uh, Your Worship, it's a note to like to pass on. Uh, one of the things, uh, I'd like to let you know is that council, uh, you may recall, we talked about buying some, uh, outdoor rink kits. Uh, the two have arrived, and staff have been setting them up over the weekend. Uh, one will be set up in Sandalwood Park, where there was a rink last year, Your Worship, and one will be set up at the Mulberry Park, which there was also a rink there last year, Your Worship. And these kits, they include rink boards and, uh, bladders, and the hope is, Your Worship, that when we get a mild spell and we lose the rinks as opposed to starting all over again for the staff, that, uh, these kits will hold the water in, and so we can, uh, get them up running again, uh, a lot sooner. So, um, and on the outdoor rink list, Your Worship, staff have been working on them. Uh, right now, as of today, we have the, uh, Grady Griffin Multi-Purpose Facility.
Into the stands, so you as a parent, if you want to go in and help your son or daughter get dressed for a ringette or hockey, whatever other sport, you can then head down the hallway and directly to the stands from the dressing room area. Uh, we head down to the far right corner of the building is where our ice resurfacer room will be with the new snow pit, large snow pit for dumping snow. Uh, we'll have our ice plant attached to the ice resurfer room, our electrical room will be there too, and then a large storage area in the far right, bottom right corner. You can see in the bottom right corner too, there's two washrooms there, those are for the outside user groups only. So any, any user groups using the outside fields during the summer months will be able to access those bathrooms. And we also have a storage area for the outside groups too, a cover story area, storage area that they can use. As we roll around the, the other side of the rink, we have our, uh, player benches, our family offices in our, in our score, scorekeeper zone. And then we move into our referees rooms and more storage and a small office area. So that's the first level. Uh, I'll move on to the second level now as I scroll to the next page. Here's our second level. On the left side, that is our low roof for our multipurpose room and office area. That's, that's only a one level area. Uh, you can also see the pool there now too. On the, on the right side is our, our main, uh, rink area, which has the second level. So I had mentioned before, you can take the stairs up to this level or the elevator here, uh, or come in through these doors and up these stairs into the stands. Uh, on the second level, we have a nice large warm room, elevated warm room for good sightlines down to the ice, uh, accessible through a chairlift, uh, too. We also have our walking track, which as mentioned by Council Bernard, has been moved to the second floor, which was, uh, feedback we've seen from the public after the first design. So it's now on the second floor over, overlooking the, the ice surface, all the way around the ice surface. Uh, we have, all four corners have, uh, washrooms, so we've lots of washrooms on this level. Uh, and down the right side, we have our, our tamboni area, which is an open area. We have a mezzanine for our ice plant, and then again, more storage area in the bottom right corner. So, uh, that's basically it. Uh, we're very pleased with where the designs come to. We've, we've worked hard with our, our architecture firm, BSRA, and also our rink engineering experts, IB Story, to come up with a, a plan that we think all users can be happy about and can, and can use year round and, and it's going to be a pride of Charlotte town. So, with any questions, uh, please let me know.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, I feel like, uh, I don't know if there's any questions that you want to take, Your Worship, I do, I do know that we, uh, council has seen this earlier, so, uh, just don't know for a minute if there's any question.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do. Right, sir. Thank you. Uh, thank you for your presentation, Mike. Uh, but certainly, uh, what, what we've witnessed here, uh, tonight, uh, there's a lot to be excited about. Uh, the group that I was involved with back when there was a debate that the wireless facility was going to be, uh, located, the group that I was involved with certainly wanted the facility to be constructed on the Simmons property for a whole host of reasons. One of the reasons we, uh, one of the reasons we let that, and how we wanted the facility to be built on the Simmons property is, uh, is younger privileged kids that, uh, would be able to walk to the facility, which has been a tradition out of the last thirty years. A lot of, a lot of children, a lot of, a lot of people who have family around them have access to vehicles, but Simmons is a Simmons campus is a walkable facility. And one of the reasons we were looking at is, uh, to have a person home, probably basically made it for underprivileged kids where we could have, uh, hockey equipment, uh, skates, so that they would be able to go and, uh, put on, put on the equipment. Uh, this would be initiated by Charlotte Meyer Hockey and, uh, be able to outfit, uh, outfit, uh, you know, these young hockey players, give them an opportunity to put the gear on, an opportunity to put on a pair of skates. There's a lot of people in that community, a lot of young people in that community, never ever had the opportunity to put on a pair of skates. And just wondering if, uh, that's been factored into what you presented here today. I'm, I'm very excited with what you presented here tonight, just wondering if that, uh, that option is there to have a dressing room that's totally dedicated and designed for a hockey equipment that's donated where, um, children can run and, and be comfortable putting on that equipment, putting on a pair of skates, making sure that they're properly fit and can go and, uh, and enjoy the game.
Right, just thank you, thank you, Council Trill. Um, and I think we'll get the building built first, and that's, that's certainly a, a great idea. Uh, don't want to say no to it, but I think we want to talk to all the service, the, all the, uh, user groups that are going to be using it first, see where the storage is going to go. Um, I don't think there's an issue with that. I'm hoping that our rinks, we're going to have some, uh, some secondhand skates that are available for anybody that wants to use them and, uh, uh, so that's something that we'll talk about in the future, but you have to get the facility built first.
Yeah, yeah, just a, just a follow up, just a follow up.
Just, Council Trill, Mike, did you want to add anything to that? I think you're looking just at the design right now to get, hopefully they'll get the, uh, funding from the federal government sooner than later, or counting on the framework, so anything that's what Council Trill said.
Yeah, yeah, that was part of the feedback, that it's, uh, it's something we've incorporated in, that's why we have so much storage in different areas that we can use for our users. So that'll be decided down the road, but it's something certainly to take into consideration. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think it, one of the dress rooms would be specifically done for that, but there's certainly lots of storage that users can use, and specifically Charlotte and Meyer Hockey, where this is a great program they do currently, uh, and they run it out of the Kerry, uh, Bell Line Center currently, but would like to move it over to Simmons, it's certainly something that's been thought of, and there's enough storage in the current design to, to allow for that.
Good, um, just a follow up, Your Worship. Go ahead, sir. Thank you, Mike, and please keep that in mind, that's certainly a top priority, uh, for the, you know, for, for the community. Secondly, uh, we're very excited to see the, uh, walking track, uh, relocated to the second floor, and, uh, we think that's an excellent feature. Uh, all demographics should have a very opportunity to utilize the, the walking track, particularly this time of the year. Uh, I think it's a great feature and, and it's, it's fully embraced by, by, by all ages. Of course, I have this, um, as, as, as you lift the walking track, it's just going to be sloped in the corners so that, uh, people want to train, for example, for running or doing track and field, indoor track and field, or, uh, you know, maybe a partnership with the schools. Will, will the doors be slapped so that, uh, it's safer for the participants as they're coming around, uh, coming around those turns? And one gentleman I talked to who's been, uh, in the, uh, in the, in the sport, uh, Mr. Houshy, who's a very much a runner and has dedicated his life, last fifty to sixty years as a runner, he said, maybe you should put in this slope on the corner so it makes it safer for runners that are running around that track.
Mike, did you get that specific yet? Because I think we're looking at a walking track, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong.
I understand, I understand that, but if there's an opportunity to do some training during the day when there's not a whole lot of people around, maybe the schools will want to utilize that for track and field purposes. But it's just a thought, I wanted to bring it to your attention, Mike.
Good point. Michael, response, response?
Yeah, uh, the current, current track as it is doesn't have slopes in the corners, uh, but still usable by the school if they come over, if they'd like to come over and train and do some track and field. It's, it's a walking track, obviously, often jogging, running the track, but I don't, I don't think the concept is a training track per se, but more of a, a multi-use track with running, walking, jogging, that sort of thing. I think the school would certainly use it and, and can use it. Not sure if the slope corners is a necessity, it's something we can take into consideration.
Please do, thank you. At the end, at the end of the day, Your Worship, I think one thing I'd like to say is, is we expect this, this, and that's why I asked, it's, it's, you know, I know it focuses on the rink, but this will be having you year round. This is, this is a beautiful facility, uh, it would be, uh, it'd be very comfortable year round. Uh, we plan on having a lot of sports, uh, out of this facility. Uh, so it's, it, you know, whether it's pickleball, whether it's lacrosse, whatever, we will have, there's a number of, of summer activities we also plan to have in this facility. So this, this will be just a one or two sports facility, this would be multiple sports. And, uh, so again, uh, I'm very pleased with the, uh, the final design. Thank you.
Well, be sure, thank you, you said really good, Council Bernard, that's an idea. Right. Thank you very much, Frank, thank you. Uh, please, uh, Council Bernard, we do have a resolution here?
We do, yeah.
If I, Your Worship, I move by Council Bernard and Counselor Ankauf that the city agrees to endorse the attached schematic designs for Simmons Sports Center as presented to council on the date of January tenth, twenty twenty-two, Your Worship.
Question?
No.
Question's gone, okay. Jeff McCohey, yeah, your name?
Yeah.
Counselor Bernard, yeah, your name?
In favor.
Mr. McKay, yeah, your name?
In favor.
Counselor Duffy?
In favor.
Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Mr. Cloud?
In favor.
Mr. Twill?
In favor.
Mr. Ankauf?
In favor.
Counselor Barrett?
In favor.
Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Mr. Cloud?
In favor.
Mr. Twill?
In favor.
Mr. Ankauf?
In favor.
Mr. Barrett?
In favor.
Look great, in favor. And Counselor, audio on?
In favor.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Counsel Bernard, Your Worship.
What's that?
I do have a question for Counsel Bernard.
Okay, thank you very much for your report, uh, Counsel Bernard, uh, you mentioned outdoor rinks, uh, I didn't hear McCarthy Park or J Frank McCauley Park. Is there an update on when they'll be brought online?
Well, the, the ones that I named off is, is what's the, that they have the base on now, so they, they, I, I believe we're doing twelve rinks in total, and the ones that came off, I believe, were six of them, so they all have a base now. So half of them is dead, we're just thinking them off between tonight and tomorrow night and hoping to have them up and running Wednesday, and then they'll start the other six.
Good, thank you very much.
All right, yeah.
Your Worship.
That's how Counsel Trill, uh, took, took the follow up on the outdoor rinks, uh, Bishop, Counsel Bernard, um, I just need to make a suggestion that if there's a possibility, I'd like to add, um, Tascosay Park as, as an outdoor rink as well. That community, um, is isolated from a lot of communities where the rinks are constructed, and I know there's a lot of children in the area, uh, and we welcome that opportunity. So if there's a possibility, I'd like to see, uh, Tascosay Park added to the, added to the list.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Counsel Trill. I think, uh, I believe they're in the minutes, uh, if you read the minutes of Park's wreck. Um, we do have twelve now, and, uh, so there is talk, obviously with demographics change and so on, I mean, there's always people looking for, uh, a new rink, I know Counsel Ramsey had a request also. Uh, so we would be looking to expand, and that's one of the reasons we're testing out these two kits that we bought, uh, we'd like to be able to purchase more of them. Uh, but what will come down to at the end of the day is, uh, resources, and that will come up during the operational budget, uh, when we have our talks and operational budget, if we can get the resources, then yes, we would be looking to, uh, expand to more of these facilities, as they, they don't, will be victim, this is very popular. Uh, so, uh, that's a discussion we'll have during the operational budget discussions.
And to Counsel Trill, and Counsel Bernard, the water cable there in Ritz was safe, uh, present, it's quite high, so it's not a very difficult space to, uh, make it there and have a go rain. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on to water, and Sewer Utility Committee, Counselor Duron.
Thank you, Your Worship, uh, our committee did not meet this month, but I have been in constant contact with manager, and he has kept me aware of any ongoing concerns and problems. And I, I must applaud the department, uh, you know, they, they faced a lot of uncertainty the last couple of weeks and working very diligently during a very difficult time in dealing with this pandemic, and, and all of the issues and problems that we are all forced to deal with. And I have to give a shout out to them and, and, uh, all our staff for, for working hard in this unknown time. We, we do have one resolution coming, and if anyone has any questions, uh, other answers and stuff like that, thank you.
Any questions? Counselor Duron, uh, last month you reported seventeen hundred customers signed up for the online payment. What do we have this month?
Uh, I don't have that number in front of me right now, we, we've been dealing with a lot of other things, so I, I, I don't know that, uh, I don't know if he has that in front of him, but, uh, if he does, that'd be great.
If not, would you just ask Mark, I think you sent out an email, settle rate?
That'd be awesome, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Your Worship, move by Counsel Duron, same by Counsel Twill, that the memorandum of agreement will be entered into with PEI Department of Environment, Energy and Climate Action to provide stream flow and groundwater monitoring in the Winter River and Coles Creek, Your Worship.
Okay, Counsel Duron, you wish to speak or just to move it on?
No, it's, it's self-explanatory there, sir, and, uh, just have to move it along.
Okay. Question called? Question's gone, yeah. All, please, favor, okay, Jeff McCohey, yeah, your name?
In favor.
Counsel Bernard, yeah, your name?
In favor.
Counsel McKay?
In favor.
Counsel Ankauf?
In favor.
Counsel Ramsey, just put your hand up. In favor. Counsel Cloud?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Counsel Ankauf?
In favor.
Counsel Barrett?
In favor.
Counsel Barrett?
In favor.
Counsel Ankauf?
In favor.
Counsel Ramsey?
In favor.
Counsel Ankauf?
In favor.
Counsel Barrett?
In favor.
Counsel Duffy?
In favor.
Counsel Ramsey?
In favor.
Counsel Ramsey, just put your hand up.
In favor.
Counsel Cloud?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Counsel Ankauf?
In favor.
Counsel Barrett?
In favor.
And Counsel Duron?
In favor.
Thank you. Good, thank you, sir. Moving on to the next report. Lee, it's Public Works, Counsel Terry McCloud?
Thank you, thank you, Your Worship, uh, Public Works and Urban Beautification Committee, um, met, um, December fourteenth, and staff members are included in the package. Uh, the Civic Board of Person's Disabilities, uh, met on December sixteenth, and the track meets are included in the monthly, uh, packages as well. Uh, we'd just like to give a big, huge, uh, shout out to the Public Works Department, uh, since Friday, uh, they've been doing, uh, doing a fair amount of work, uh, to try to form that it was, um, you know, the soft coming down early and, uh, you know, heavy pack winds, I know we pulled the sidewalks thousands of hours off, uh, uh, when it was a hundred and fourteen kilometers an hour wind, so, um, it made for a difficult, uh, um, taking of the snow away. Uh, just to give you an idea, um, we had, uh, we had, we had roughly thirty contract trucks coming in each night to haul snow. Um, we had two contract loaders, five city loaders, uh, four tractors, uh, tractors to pull out, um, we had eight, uh, tractors, uh, of, uh, plows coming into open sidewalk, uh, and we had five soft plow trucks, uh, so the, the, I can't say enough about the, uh, the staff at the Public Works Department, how they, uh, took this one in the chain because I heard snowstorm to, uh, to deal with. There was, uh, a lot of cars, a lot of ambulances, a lot of trucks, uh, all stuck in the middle of those, they just, uh, up and left their vehicles. Um, the first storm of the year is always a tough one, um, because, you know, uh, we kind of don't take, uh, you know, the true meaning of what it means to go home and stay safe and get off the roads, but that always takes the first storm, and it was a doozy. So, uh, again, just a big shout out to the Public Works staff and the management team for keeping the, uh, roads, uh, safe and, and, uh, also to the public for their patience. It's, uh, you know, we're all, if you get out of first care with COVID, as Counsel Duron had mentioned, you know, the first thing you'll do is get out and do their walk, and it's pretty tough to do, uh, uh, with a storm like this, so I do appreciate, uh, people's patience and, uh, they're working, uh, definitely hard, and hopefully by, uh, by the end of tomorrow, maybe, uh, end of the next day, we'll, we'll see, uh, everything getting to be cleared up, uh. On the other side of that, uh, I believe I have, uh, two resolutions for consideration. Um, I'll try to answer any questions again, thank you.
And you, Counsel Terry McCloud, any questions?
I have one, uh, too, Your Worship.
Counsel Trill and Counsel Bob Duron, Counsel Twill?
Yeah, thank you for your report, Counsel McCloud, um, just received some, uh, some phone calls over the last couple of days, and, uh, it's a little bit of a battle with some towns and the Public Works staff, uh, the folks that are operating the equipment, uh, all snow has come down. It concerns our, I want to bring to, uh, to council's attention, uh, received, uh, calls from Parkdale, uh, people that love to, love to go out in, in the rock and to walk through the neighborhoods and be very safe, secure there, uh, in terms of sidewalk plowing, uh, it's been brought to my attention, uh, over the streets, like Palmer's Lane, Confederation Street, um, down that road, uh, sidewalk, uh, a good section of, uh, sidewalk down south to Bobby Do Adden, uh, I'm not sure what the timeframe and timeline is, but, uh, hopefully, uh, things will be able to transpire there in the next forty-five hours to, uh, to make that safe before the people are letting up, taking the community, uh, council residents on Bayfield Street, uh, snow, uh, wasn't plowed, uh, following morning people arriving home at eleven o'clock and the street's still wasn't plowed, and I understand it's slow going, uh, but I, I do want to bring to everyone's attention that, you know, while it is slow going, I'm, I'm very concerned about the safety and security, particularly if, uh, if there's a fire or, or ambulance need to, uh, can down Bayfield Street, which is a narrow street, uh, and if the street's not plowed, uh, or not plowed effectively, then, uh, it puts, uh, the people on this particular street and other, other streets in this community in a very precarious, very vulnerable position. So, uh, I don't know, uh, what, uh, what the litmus test is and, and where, where the police department or the fire department get involved with Public Works, uh, to build the recovery and say, look, these, uh, these streets are, uh, they're all a priority, but, uh, a lot of the other communities came to the residents that, you know, here's the expected timeframe and timelines as to when these streets are going to be plowed and when sidewalks are going to be plowed. Uh, more and more people are, community now, um, um, as pedestrians and, and walking their kids to school and wanting to get out of the house and, and be with their children and walking them safe, secure there. So, uh, those are some of the issues I wanted to bring forward. Um, I'd like to get a report back as to, uh, you know, how these decisions are made, and, and I really believe that, uh, uh, there needs to be a communication strategy communicated directly to the residents as to when the expectation in terms of some of these neighborhood streets are going not only to be plowed, be cleaned, and when the sidewalks are going to be, uh, going to be cleared. Uh, it's been two or three days now and, and, and residents are getting anxious. Thank you.
Counsel Cloud, please?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Counsel Trill, for your, uh, for your comments and, and points, interest. Uh, I will say that, um, if I could answer them directly, uh, uh, I'd be a wizard. Um, every storm, every storm has its, uh, complications, and this particular one has caused, uh, you know, the plow base, uh, wouldn't ride up over the, over the, sorry, wouldn't stay down on the pavement, would ride up over the ice-packed, uh, roads, and, and I guess, you know, to start with the community being safe, I think we all need to learn that when, when the warnings are out there is for us to get home. Uh, and, and we couldn't plow, uh, a lot of streets simply because of the cars on, uh, parked in the middle of roads and whatnot, and I can't say what street for sure, but I, I, you know, I think the first snowstorm is a learning curve for everyone, and, uh, the sidewalk piles that, you know, they're made to clear snow, this was an ice, you know, we didn't enough let it ice pack in, and, and we had a lot of breakdowns, um, it was just the kind of storm that was, uh, counselor, but, uh, your points will definitely be taken. I know, uh, I was constantly on, on the, on the line with, uh, Mr. Kelly and, and, uh, Jerry McKinnon and, uh, making updates, and, uh, we had, uh, some fresh releases on Facebook, um, so we're doing what we can to update the public as, as this goes along, and it is frustrating for everyone now because in today's world, we want to go, 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 but, uh, sometimes modern nature, we can't argue with it, so, uh, anyway, thank you very much.
Counsel Duron and Counsel McKay?
Thank you for your report, uh, Counsel McCloud, and I, I certainly understand, I mean, there's a lot of snow down, you know, you can try and keep your own driveway, place, uh, clean, it's, it's pretty, pretty heavy and, and lots of snow. Uh, I just wanted to ask, uh, a further follow-up question about the, uh, uh, question I did last month, I know you were going to take it back to your committee there, but I didn't, I didn't see it, uh, about coats for the, uh, the workers that are looking at, especially in the storms, are, are we able to look at anything, uh, for these workers that are not covered, uh, with a coat or anything like that?
Thank you very much, uh, Counsel Duron, for your question. I believe that it's, um, that's a, a kind of an operations question, so I will ask, uh, Mr. Adams, if he's online there, to, to give you, uh, a next place on that, and thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Your Worship, thank you, uh, Counsel McCloud. Uh, so, so in my question of questions, Counsel Duron, um, coats or any type of, uh, equipment or supplies we supply to staff in terms of equipment, that, uh, it is a negotiated, uh, term as part of our collective agreements, uh, and so something like that would be reviewed, uh, as we enter, whenever we enter into our next round of negotiations, which I believe are still a couple of years away, um, that's what I'd ask. Uh, I know a question back about kind of a loaner program, um, that is challenging at best sometimes, uh, you have to have a substantial amount of coats, uh, and when you start loaning them out, there is, we do find in times that it's not, uh, some people don't take care, uh, of the equipment or, or the coats, and so, for instance, you know, if you're doing a coat, you're in your program, you get one for every two years, you're going to take care of it, but if you get a new one every day, it would come back, uh, we, we do find that, uh, we have found in the past with certain programs that things, things get returned, it's in great shape as we would like to, but we're in the pocket venture, so, again, we'll take it on the right and then, and look at it when, uh, the next round of negotiations happen.
Counsel McKay?
Thank you. Uh, thank you for your report, Counsel McCloud, I guess I'm just looking, uh, in the minutes in your report, talked about, uh, at the committee level, you had, you were going to recommend the four, five, six, five, or multiple pathways, past day, Counsel Plan, the council, do you know when that's going to happen? I'm not seeing it in the resolutions tonight.
Uh, uh, sorry about Counsel McKay, thank you very much for your question. Um, I'll, I'll probably, uh, pass that over to Scott, but it, it does have to do with our capital budget, uh, discussion that's, that's ongoing, uh, we had teleconference today, and, uh, but I will let Scott answer, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel McCloud and Your Worship, uh, yes, for the potential, McCloud is ready to, uh, because it is part of the capital budget discussion, uh, we, under discussion with CEO, uh, want to, we can bring this all at the same time as part of our, uh, our capital budget, when, when that comes to council for final discussion and approval.
Hey, Counsel McKay, good, Counsel Bernard?
Uh, good question for, uh, uh, Counsel McCloud, and he may put it to Scott if he wishes. I'm just wondering that, I'm sure I read probably close to a month ago now anyway, but there was some criteria set in of how the department's staff, uh, recommend what, what sidewalks and what multiple pathways and what streets, so, and get done, I'm just wondering, um, do you have that criteria, or does Scott, can you read that off, what the criteria was for, for, for how you recommend those, uh, projects?
Yeah, certainly, let Scott answer that, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship, uh, Counsel Bernard, uh, so, it's quite simple, I guess, the first criteria was we're trying to look at school zones, so priority, make sure, um, children have safe access or safe, uh, access to school. Um, second was, it was kind of a balancing terms, uh, we wanted to find those neighborhoods that are missing links, so, uh, as you're probably aware, smart here, a, a couple of people, um, there's some neighborhoods that there's a sidewalk on one street and another parallel street, but then there's no connector sidewalk between them. So we wanted to kind of finish, or the next criteria was finishing off a neighborhood that, uh, have a number of sidewalks, but making those connections, uh, so that people can get to complain A to point B about how the broken sidewalk to, uh, to where the sidewalk. Uh, and then we also tried to prioritize on, uh, areas that have higher traffic volumes, uh, uh, you know, more prone to cut through traffic versus, uh, neighborhoods that may see a hundred vehicles a day. Uh, so that's kind of where we started with our, uh, analysis of prioritizing the five year plan.
Okay, and, uh, so, so
uh, so that people can get to complain A to point B without having to go from sidewalk to uh, to road to sidewalk. Uh, and then we also tried to prioritize on uh, areas that have higher traffic volumes, uh, uh, you know, more prone to cut through traffic versus uh, neighbourhoods that may see a hundred vehicles a day. Uh, so that's kind of where we started with our uh, analysis of prioritizing the five-year plan.
Okay, and so, so staff would be discussing them obviously and making recommendations back to the committee? Correct?
Correct. Yeah, that would be correct.
Yeah, okay, all right, no, just wanted to see if this, okay, so it's, it's done professionally, which is great to hear, thank you.
And if I, if I may, your worship, uh, just to back uh, councillor Drong's uh, question on the coat, I think I would have that brought to our next committee meeting. Um, just to uh, kick it around a little more, I'm sure there's some way that we could have, provide a couple of coats each year and if they go missing, they go missing. But at least for that one or two individuals, there might be an opportunity to have something for them. Um, you know, it's, it's uh, it's out there and I, I understand where councillor Drong's uh, coming from and uh, we'll see what we can do with that on that our next meeting.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you councillor McLeod, okay, we have two resolutions.
I have two resolutions.
Your worship? Another question?
Yes, I do. Uh, considering, uh, you know, the storm, snowstorm that we just had and how difficult it is for a lot of our residents that don't have the uh, physical attributes to be able to shovel, shovel their driveways or, you know, certainly can't afford to bring in contractors, create the driveways and shovel their sidewalks. So I would to uh, to the public works department, uh, explore the opportunity and invest upon a new program where uh, we could bring back some of the public works employees and call them in the community and help assist, for example, our senior citizens, uh, residents that are physically challenged, that don't have the, the, again, the reiterating of the physical attributes to be able to clean the sidewalks, be able to shovel over driveways. I, I, I think it would be, uh, you know, a good program to initiate, it would help uh, a lot of residents in our city, uh, particularly in this time of year. Uh, and you know, in this downtime, I'm sure, uh, staff and public works at the management level could find other, other work for, for employees to uh, to be able to, you know, other assignments to be able to work on. But uh, I think the program would discuss from the private code along long way to, to helping our seniors and, and people that just don't have the, uh, you know, just don't have the, but again, the, the opportunity or don't have the stamina to be able to clean, clean the sidewalks and their uh, and the driveways. And, and I think it uh, it, it just would be a fantastic program. I'd like to initiate something uh, of this nature, uh, discuss it with the, with the residents, to get their feedback and, and begin a pilot project this year. Uh, I know lots of residents in all over the world would welcome that opportunity because when you have snow of this magnitude, it creates a lot of fear. People are intimidated, they're alone, uh, they don't know, whether they're going to be able to get out of their house and not certainly able to get their groceries or, or be able to go see the doctor or, or, you know, just uh, uh, you know, services that they need at the professional level, whether to be able to go to the bank or, or, or whatever face may be. I, I, I really think the time is now to embark upon such a program. I wanted to bring that to your attention and I, I would certainly be willing to work on such a program.
So just on that, on that point, your worship, uh, that needs to go back to um, the committee, but also, uh, we also have to be aware of any potential uh, liability. So again, our budgetary process would not accommodate this at this time until council, unless council approved otherwise. So we'll take it back to the committee, uh, if that's council's desire and we'll go forward from there.
Uh, just, just a follow-up, Mr Kelly.
Councillor, just one second.
Your worship.
Just one second, councillor, uh, take, take that back to the committee, we can discuss, we can look at best practices, not other jurisdictions, and then follow up at the next meeting. Is that all right councillor McLeod?
Yeah, I have no, I have no problem with that whatsoever, uh, councillor Drill's uh, concern for the neighbourhood is uh, duly noted and that uh, uh, you know, with the, with your bylaws in place that uh, doesn't allow us to be going on private property, but at the same time, it could be a volunteer, uh, something we could work together on councillor Drill, uh, to see if, if we could find. And there's also provincial funding programs as well, and sometimes it just takes people like you and myself and the rest of the council to uh, to help the seniors and, and folks that can't shovel, to navigate through that, uh, the reef to get it done. But I certainly would uh, welcome that, that opportunity to, to, but we will bring it back to the committee as well, thank you.
Okay, and, and again, uh, councillor McLeod, I, I'd like to, you know, spread the opportunity to bring back, you know, some of our employees. We've got some, some great employees in the public works department, uh, senior employees, and I, I think it would be a great opportunity for them. And I understand the bylaws, I understand the liability issues, but, you know, we also got to look at common sense here and what we can do to uh, to help our residents. That's the business that we're in, it's not all just black and white, there, there's, there's got to be some flexibility here, take that with both time of year, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McLeod, we have two resolutions. You want to pick the first?
If I, if you'd worship, move by councillor McLeod, second by councillor Duffy, that as per the conditions of the public request for quotations for a Lumen Trappesordal dump body of sixty inches chassis, uh, that the low submission parter for trucks in the amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars plus all public taxes be accepted, your worship.
Question? Question called?
Question called?
Question called? We've got Cody, lay your hand.
In favor.
Councillor Perret?
In favor.
Councillor K?
In favor.
Councillor Duffy? Councillor Duffy? Councillor Duffy? Councillor Ramsey? In favor? Councillor McLeod? In favor? Councillor Drill? In favor? Councillor Yankoff? In favor? Councillor Reber? In favor? And councillor Grommet? In favor? So just have to know that councillor Duffy stepped in. Okay, six, four.
Okay, move by councillor McLeod, just second by councillor Duffy, that as the city, sorry, that the city of Charlton accept the quote of nineteen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars plus public taxes from Duffy Construction for a change order to the Union Road Snow Dump for the installation of a sediment pond.
Okay, uh, question? Question? Okay, Debbie or Cody?
In favor.
In favor? Councillor Perret?
In favor.
Councillor K?
In favor.
Councillor Duffy?
Councillor Duffy left the meeting.
Councillor Duffy has left the, has left the building, okay? Councillor Ramsey? Thank you. Okay, councillor McLeod?
In favor.
Councillor Drill?
In favor.
Councillor Yankoff?
In favor.
Councillor Reber?
In favor.
And councillor Grommet?
In favor.
Okay, is that it, sir?
Yes, worship.
I can lose the board. Thank you, sir. Okay, next report. Councillor Blue, economic development.
It is, of course. The Canadian Event Management Committee met to the sector fifteen, brought it included in your package, who received ministers after June. Um, the Earth Advisory Board minutes, they met on the seventh, uh, the fourteenth, two, three, December, and their ministers are also included in your package or in your email. Uh, just to give a little update, staff not recently, with representatives from immigrant refugees, the Association of PEI, which is set to determine how the municipality can help them achieve relevant recommendations identified within their current needs, findings and recommendations. Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two reports. Staff are also communicating with the PEI connectors to determine how the municipality can work more, more closely with their organization. The current reach of the pandemic has, has had an expected impact that our planned capital New Year's Eve celebrations, with the staff were able to quickly transition plans into a virtual format, which will allow the feet and over two thousand people to took in, took part at the family dance party. Oh, so, staff are actively working with the Department of Canadian Heritage to plan for the Wichita National Ice Carving Championship. Charlton will serve as one of ten host cities, the championship that will take place across, across the country, seven, six, and six, as soon as they're able to go. The Eastern Canadian Basketball League recently announced that the Eastern Center in Charlton will be home to the sixth and final team in the new ECBL league. The Charlton Power is the name for the team that gets named right, so, so, staff has been focusing with twenty twenty-three teams in the Canadian Home Society with respect to hosting several festivals in the capital city in advance of the game. And finally, the capital city event named Bennett's Metner, which includes the city, are working deliberately and creatively through shorter pathways to the Jack Ross, who's named by City Festival. That will meet the O.C. week, I will call the guy lives, of course. That's it for my tours, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer, thank you.
Great. Any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, councillor Drill, there's a question, I'll go ready to take that.
Thank you for your report, councillor, okay? Um, people have noticed the signs, Happy Holidays, the four by eight signs that were put up around the city. And some residents have questioned me as to why, uh, we're not illustrating Merry Christmas on the four by eight signs as opposed to Happy Holidays. I wanted to bring that to your attention and the council's attention, that people have been, you know, have noticed, uh, the signs Happy Holidays versus Merry Christmas. It is Christmas, I mean, that's what we're celebrating and I'm wondering what we can do to change that to uh, convey the message, Merry Christmas as opposed to Happy Holidays.
Well, I think, probably I get to refer back to uh, Wayne or Laurel in a minute. I'm, I'm assuming it's because we are such a culturally diverse community now, where we try to recognize that it is a holiday season, but not everybody celebrates Christmas, would be my guess. Not that it's something we don't, can't not discuss, but I want to turn that over to Laurel and Wayne to see if they have anything they might want to add.
Okay. Wayne? Laurel?
Yeah, I, I can take it, um, so, your worship councillor McCabe is correct, uh, that this has been discussed previously and our understanding, I believe, from human resources is that the city's position on messaging around the holiday season is to be reflective of our culturally diverse residents. So Happy Holidays would deem to be more appropriate than Merry Christmas. We recognize that while a lot of the city does celebrate Christmas, not everyone does, so it's an effort to be, um, more welcoming and accepting of other residents who may not choose or may not recognize the Christmas season.
And councillor Drill, you know that Kenny Vayke and his group, uh, Sabbath helpers, they erect that huge sign at the end of the Cannon Drive, Cannon Drive in North of Arrol. The city does help out and I've seen other signs in the city and as councillor Williams, he knows, we brought this discussion up at Economic Development, Public Works, I, I also brought it up in planning. So, I think Scott, uh, Scott Adams plans to look at a policy in the coming months and work and collaborate with the other departments.
So, can I follow up?
Sure.
Okay, well, I understand probably the sense of it to all the cultures. I guess the, the, the recommendation that I would have is, uh, why not celebrate all cultures when it comes to, uh, you know, their respective religion, uh, to, you know, a specific time of the year? We could also put up four by eight signs and, and recognize their particular religion and, and celebrate it. I, I don't think we need to, um, to say no to one, why not say yes to all? For example, you know, we celebrate Christmas on the twenty-fifth of December, so why not, why not embrace that and celebrate it? And then there's other religions, we could have open discussions with them and see what particular time of the year that they, they celebrate, uh, you know, that, that special time of the year. And we could, uh, embrace their respective culture in the same way. Uh, I think it's a great opportunity to embrace diversity, uh, as opposed to, you know, just taking a non, or taking neutrality approach. I, I think it's something we need to discuss, it's something we should be celebrating for all religions.
Your worship, can I, can I respond to that?
Yeah, and just councillor Drill, that's discussed, we had economic development, public works and planning. So, the discussion's going on and Laurel, can you take over too?
Uh, yeah, so, so your worship councillor Drill, um, it, it is a great idea and I think it goes back to councillor McCabe's report where she indicated that, um, our department is currently working with Immigrants and Refugee Services Association, PEI, on, uh, how we can, um, work with the, the newcomer community and, um, other cultures within our city to recognize and, and make them feel more a part of the community that they live in. With respect to the holiday season in particular, I'm not sure if you are aware, but, um, there are over fifty holidays celebrated between November first and January fifteenth. So, it's just not physically possible to recognize all of them on a four by eight sign or recognize all of them in general because it's, it's inevitable that we would end up missing one. So, by taking the stance that we're, we're wishing people happy holidays, we're recognizing that whatever holiday someone chooses to celebrate during that period, we are wishing them a happy holiday. It's not meant to exclude, it's not meant to be neutral, it's just meant to make people aware that Christmas is not the only holiday that is celebrated during this period. And it's to make people, it's, like I said, it's just to make people aware that there are other holidays being celebrated and that they can take an opportunity to look into some of those others or they can simply choose to wish each other Merry Christmas if they would like to. But as a municipality, it is kind of our responsibility to ensure that residents feel like they are part of their community. And if they don't celebrate Christmas by seeing a sign that only says Merry Christmas, it gives the impression that we aren't looking widely and recognizing that other holidays are celebrated.
Councillor? Thank you, uh, Laurel and Councillor Laurel, your worship? Yeah, just councillor Drill, you do set, set on the economic development.
I understand that, but, 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 I brought to my attention, your worship, so I said I would bring it up.
Let me just finish, I appreciate it, we did, uh, councillor Ramsey, along with councillor McCabe, it just needed to discuss that our economic development meeting, uh, councillor Andy, he tells us also discussed the public works. And councillor McCabe, because I brought it up, that planning and development. So, the, the, we've opened up the dialogue and now it's up to us to pursue to be standing to meetings. And you're the only one that applies to this situation, that's the economic development meeting. So we're going to move on councillor, because I just want to get to your report. And then your question, councillor McCabe. Okay, can we go to environment sustainability, councillor Richard Quinell?
Thank you, your worship, members of council. Uh, the committee did not meet in December, uh, but we had a report from the Mayor's Task Force and Act for Transportation. Uh, I will do my best to answer your questions and of course we have our manager, uh, Ramon Bellas, it's, uh, early English this evening. Thank you.
Resolutions, so any questions for councillor Drill? For a moment? Councillor Drill, thank you very much.
Your worship, I just wanted to highlight, uh, I asked the committee, uh, not, I'm sorry, I asked all members of council, please read the report and of course, something that's clear and dear to my heart is, uh, uh, on, uh, section six of, of the research, uh, where they said, uh, quote, art to which we all, run from the, uh, Mayor's Task Force. The committee, uh, under section six, uh, the committee, the discussions of the town's road extension, the committee's recommendation is the town's road is dangerous and receives many complaints from the general public that the town's road is a priority and should be budgeted for year one. I just wanted to bring that to council's attention, uh, your worship, um, any chance they get to promote a, a safe, a safe venue for the, uh, for the residents that live in the Sherwood community? When you take into consideration the town's road, there's at least two to three thousand cars a day that travel that road. Your worship?
Thanks councillor Drill, that's been publicly noted in the public rep. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to councillor.
Now, I just have a question, your worship.
Go ahead, go ahead, councillor Perret.
Um, I, I know this is the mayor, uh, Mayor's Task Force and Act for Transportation, so I guess these are resident members you're talking about, that they make recommendations, is that correct?
Yes, it is. They're advising the, the task force.
That's a recommendation that would go to public works staff when they, uh, use their criteria to come up with recommendations, how the capital dollars should be spent.
Yeah, so that's how it works.
So the question I had was, why is this here now when we haven't finished our deliberations?
Um, Your Worship, I could, again, it's not a point of order, Your Worship, we're getting into debate, and it's not supposed to happen at this stage, this happened before. We are doing a, a jurisdictional scan, and before we do implement this part of the, of the bylaw, I will come back to the committee and onward to council. So this is just putting the process in place in order for us to move forward, and we'll come back again, Your Worship.
Counsel, Counsel Quill, you set out a strategic priorities committee, that's what I was going to say, Mr. Kelly. We'll get back to the committee when we discuss this, and we can follow up before we act on the, the position of the independent officer.
Okay. Okay, Your Worship, I did bring it up there, and that was the understanding, there's more work to be completed.
And it is being done, Your Worship.
Excellent. And here's to you, Counsel Quill. Shell carry, yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea.
Your Worship, next bylaw, second reading.
I'm just going to tell you, I just have to find it. Is it yea? Yea, eee. Okay, okay, okay. And Counsel Duffy is asked, anyone else asked? Okay, thank you.
Your Worship, a bylaw to repeal certain bylaws, number 2021-RCB01. Occasionally, a bylaw starts to be repealed but not replaced, therefore, a new repeal bylaw should be duly passed to allow this process. The City of Shell Town bylaw to repeal certain bylaws, which was initially approved and adopted on August 26, 1997, shall be repealed and replaced with the attached bylaw to repeal certain bylaws, 2021-RCB01. Your Worship, we would, Counsel Ramsey, second, Counsel Dr. Long, be resolved that the City of Shell Town bylaw to repeal certain bylaws, number 2021-RCB-01, be read a second time and approved, that the said bylaw be now adopted.
So Counsel Yankoff, you're not yet involved. Okay, um, Shell carry.
Uh, uh.
Okay, that's it for that, Counsel Ramsey?
Yes, it is, and I'd like to wish everybody a very happy new year.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I need a resolution to adjourn.
Everyone else, too, I'll second that.
Second by Counsel, all in favor, signify by yea.
Yea.
Thank you very.